Uh, missing persons... Fifty-five, fifty-nine. Alright. Thank you Kyle, thank you for letting me know, cuz they would've started from the forties. Fifty-five to fifty-nine. There we go, small victories, fifty-six, okay. Awesome. Now, it said there was two. So, I assume they're both on the same level? Or something like that? Out of the way! Okay, these guys don't all... All out of attack. Nice. Uh, let's take the Arcana. I'm gonna have tons of luck. Thanks. Snuff so- oh yeah. Getting lots of nice stuff, I'll take that. Gonna have to fight that guy unfortunately. Oh yeah, what are these guys' weaks to again? I forgot. Nice. Oh, they fired back! You know what that means? Time for Jack Frost. All out of attack. Ooh, we got a four. See, XP from battle won increase. Store health, we don't need that. Got money, let's take the XP. Especially since I'm trying to make Axis Hiko get up. I even got my ass by rid of enemy, I just barely managed to run. Yes, it can be deadly. You have to be careful cuz The way the camera is and everything else like that. You know, they can catch you unaware as pretty easily. And if you get Lucky the first time Cuz we got one there. Getting reenrolled person. Okay? Sure there's someone here, check everywhere please, okay? So that's one, anyway, so They can kinda catch you unaware, and if they do They might get lucky and then you end up You know, maybe losing somebody. And if that happens, you're in trouble. Hello guy. Ah, hmm. Must've been one of the first people who went missing. Can you provide treatment immediately? Ask for an escort. Okay, so Junpei's gonna take that back. Don't worry, we'll keep them safe at the entrance until you decide to leave for the night. If any more missing pe- people, please let us know as soon as you can, okay? So that Maybe on this level, we'll have to see. Another discharm. Okay, so we got this. Eh. Okay, so that's the entire floor. Hmm. Maybe we'll have to go- "I was waiting for a savior and then Junpei showed up, and I would not be confident..." No. Not necessarily. We have to go back and talk to Elizabeth again. Yeah, me too. See, like that. Yep. We have no clue what its weaks to either, um... Kinda to figure out, I guess. Hey, Koha. He's just bad, oh, okay, thanks. Thanks Kyle, I appreciate it. Blocks that one, huh? Damn. Hitting with the buffula. There we go. Okay, and Mitsuru leveled up, that's not necessarily what I was hoping for, but, fine. Air shoes. Uh, Mitsuru, go ahead. Since you said they looked nice, I'll give them to you. Got a few more left to go unfortunately. And there's no like, uh... Go home or whatever. That you can use. Somewhere in here. Good enough. Head back. Talk to Elizabeth again and see, maybe... Fill- fill us in on the other one. Sixty-one and sixty-eight. Hmm. And we can't go any further, I don't think than sixty... maybe? Okay, sixty-one and sixty-eight. Uh, sixty-four, okay. On level sixty-four. Okay, let's just zoom on by. Yeah, I'm surprised, actually, I would- I do wonder what you would do with like an extra hour in the day, right? Whole extra hour To do whatever you wanted, what would you do? Junpei keeps dying and losing all the theories he charged, absolutely. And you grinded him too, so I don't know what to tell you. So, it's kind of a you problem, I think. Kind of a you problem, I think, Kyle. Let's go, sixty-two. Agilao. I know. I'm just so cool. Alright, only one more floor after this one. It's a Junpei problem, actually, that's a fucking lie. It's a you problem, and I know it for certain. Cuz I've never had Junpei die except for a few times. He's actually a little bit of a glass cannon, isn't he? He's a little bit of a glass cannon cuz he- he's getting knocked down a couple times, actually. In my playthrough so far, and part of it's obviously down to me, but... You know? It's not all me, right? Junpei's off the team if he's being such a bitch, well... You could easily replace him with Akikiko, so I suppose that's not a problem. There she is, there she is. Alright. Ooh, a treasure chest. I love treasure chests. Mugi water, huh? Mugi mind water, you know what I mean? Gang, gang. I will cry. Disphere. Hey, there we go. Uh, take back to the entrance. Nice. Akiko can't do the same thing, he's not even the amazing Junpei. Well, he might not be able to be amazing Junpei, but he can be the amazing Akikiko, and that You know? Sounds better, to the alliteration, right? Alright, so we got everybody. Good enough for me, um... Nothing else that I need to do. So that'll be that. There we go, nice. Ooh, the Home Shopping Network. Okay, so Maya is not gonna Work with us here. Oh hey! Yeah, wish you, um... Our bond isn't gonna get any stronger, so I don't have to tell you, kid. I don't know what to tell you. I'm your host, Senaka, with a live presentation of my amazing commodities. We'll show you great products at unbeatable prices, so don't touch that dial, because I know you don't want to miss these. Today, we're introducing the Home Gardening Set. Perfect for those of you who've been dreaming of growing a lush garden at home, it's great for beginners too. First up, we have the Omriyon Sprout. And you get two Get two. These little green jams will grow into the roundest sweetest something you've ever tasted, oh my goodness, it's wonderful, by the way, there's more. Grow- okay, I don't need any of this. Uh, no. Your Office Snack Set. That's it? Okay. Fuck, Senaka, that was garbage. That was fucking garbage. Actually, I wanna go in and check the calendar real quick. That was garbage! Okay, so the seventh is Operation Day? I'm assuming that's the The moon, right? Because what, today's the twenty-eighth? I think? It was twenty-seventh to twentieth. Thirtieth, that's half, and then seventh is the The Operation Day. Alright, now Operation Day. Senaka will be my bedroom tonight because I was a believer, okay, well I've Good for you, I guess, that's kinda Kinda scary, actually. It's kinda terrifying, actually. Now... Let's win over the Paulonia Mall, cuz it- because I wanted to see if I can get any more of the Jack Frost Figures. I don't totally know how to get this. Ah, the Jack Frost doll. Play until you surprise. You'll need two more of these. Because I believe I already have one. I bought it, the first one, uh, instinctually. When I first saw it, nice. If you don't true terror, it'll someone put you in a Nidoki Nidoki cardboard cutout outside your front door, yeah, it's terrifying. Oh, got him the first time too, nice. It's the Mr. Bean one that I have is scary enough. That one was genuinely scary because it looks so lifelike. So if you're at a distance, it really looks like Mr. Beans in my house, and it's kinda freaky, especially if it's dark. Okay, so we have, I believe, two Jack Frost dolls, here. We have three, nice, okay, so that'll be enough. Out of the way! Seems you've completed a request, okay. Physical manifestation of Jack Frost, yes, no doubt, it's a Jack Frost doll. I'm greatly fond of the Jack Frost, may I touch it? Oh my, it's so soft. To be honest, I was conflicted over what sort of Jack Frost request to make. I also considered asking you to nurture him until he reached level ninety-nine, but I'm glad I chose to make this request in the end, since I've gotten such a cute doll out of it. As said, I would still love to see Jack Frost at his strongest one day. Please take this as your reward. Three Twilight Fragments for all that work, huh? Potent Medicine, okay. Let's see about First off... I'm twenty-three, so I could make And I can't do that one because it's not Over twenty-three, it has to be over twenty-three. Only person in your house is me, don't worry, that's terrifying. Okay, we can't get potent medicine yet. So who damn cares? I certainly don't. Um, we will sell the stuff to the police station, but we're not gonna buy anything today, it's not on sale. Oh? Something that a missing schoolgirl brought in as a reward when we found her. Oh yeah? Better thanks, that's nice. Oh, nice. Forty thousand! Damn! Black quartz. Two black quo- damn, what the hell? I'm rolling in cash, bro. Look at that. Eighty K. Almost ninety K. Yes! I'm too powerful! Oh, we have them, there we go. What's our district rating? Okay, cool. I've saved them all. Everyone is saved. I will talk to the goal-making. I'm a little bit hungry myself. Let us set forth on a culinary adventure! Oh, you're not gonna eat that, mind if I have it? If you don't mind bonding with Mitsuru, it's gonna grow stronger and spend time together. It's almost dark, decided to head back to my dorm. Oh well. Am I the only one in here? That's kinda depressing. Yeah, that is depressing, I'm gonna go to, uh... Probably, the, uh... Upstairs, no, I did not check upstairs. Should I check upstairs? Doesn't seem like anyone's around. Yes, give me the full course. Yeah, if they had any sort of, uh... Any sort of stuff they could've done, it would've listed. Would've lifted. Listed it in the map thing. Like a smiley face or whatever. And I don't give a shit where they went, otherwise. About a week, there'll be another mission. That's right. Wonder what we'll face this time? Do we just keep getting, going on all these missions until we defeat all the remaining, eight remaining shadows? Yeah, probably. Finally falling orders to get stronger by going to Tartarus and fight shadow after shadow? I've been thinking about this for a while, I feel like Kirijo Senpai is hiding something from us. I mean, obviously, there's something wrong Uh, going on regarding the Kirijo Group. Goodbye. Just tausing, I knew that already. If only you could do that in real life, huh? That's ended for today. Give a new burger. Yes, the, uh... Actually, speaking of which, I do have to go to the, the mall. Sorcery is awesome, I just don't need the, uh, the background info because I'm, uh... Already well-informed on Of course, technology. Starting to feel like that. Okay, so everybody is good on that. How about armor? Good. How about footwear? Do we have the best footwear possible? Wait, 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 okay. How about accessories? Okay, what could we get that's an accessory? Fuse boost, distress boost, fuse- tier boost. Um, ba-ba-ba-ba. I actually wanna give her the SP boost. Guess that's good enough, I don't know. Not the button I wanna do. For now, that's good enough. Now... Now can we hang out? Oh my god, you're awful. Little gremlin you are. A little gremlin you are! Let's go hang out with Odigiri. Let's hang out with Odigiri. Fine. Try and build the social link. I see, you have an interesting take on things. Hi, Odigiri, can you work escape, please? Please? Is there anybody? Yeah, obviously Kirijo Group had something to do with something that happened there, and they built Either built the school on top of it Or something similar to that. Some weird stuff happening here. He's in the command room. I guess I'll look for Fuka. Try and figure out what- who Fuka is. Hello, Fuka. Can I help you? Are you okay? You're just talking about girl stuff. Okay. You're just talking about girl stuff, Kyle, don't- don't worry about it. Did girl stuff. We have some stuff we can do here. Ooh, Mitsuru again. Some tea again, oh, certainly. Of course. Mm-hmm. I thought it was chamomile. I drank herbal tea with Mitsuru, as we discussed our favorite snacks. Yeah, I think that was interesting, the way that they handled the whole What I assume is gonna be the reveal of what the, uh... The source of Tartarus is, I like that they kind of shoot, they- they They had Yukari kind of slowly Kind of say, something's kinda wrong here, and they brought it up a few times beforehand, and it was kinda like, I was wondering what that was. But then it's kind of now is developed into this thing. They tell you already about the mod, which replaces every dialogue option that says, "I don't care" with, "I like" Well... I haven't heard anything about it, but I'm Tempted to download that one. Hey, sup, I'm gonna have to head out soon, how about you? Oh, we're not gonna get any- any- many better, but fine. Fine, fine, fine. Actually, I didn't get to show you earlier, but I installed a mod for Half-Life that puts, uh... That puts Barney in a Cat Girl outfit. Or rather, a Cat Girl maid outfit. Make sure we're not missing anything here. I think we already got the Yoshimi guy. I hope. Have anyone stopped thinking about how I borrowed this bar, the DVD charm, um, we could do some charm. But what are you doing? Toothcut Plant is doing, oh, you could do that, yeah, sure. That's inside, I really wanna see these polygons, oh yeah! It's very funny, I I gotta laugh out of it, but, uh... How do we fix it? Thanks for the care you put in, it looks like this will be a big harvest, oh yeah! Uh-oh. Have a feeling the kid's gonna visit. Hello Death. How are you doing, Death? That next week Uh, there's gonna be a big problem, we have to save the world, or whatever.
The next full moon will be in one week. Are you prepared? Be careful, okay? And don't worry. I'll come see you again.
Alright. Yeah, go to sleep, Ferris, try to sleep, just leave me alone. Exactly. Exactly. Leave me alone, little child, I know the story already. I figured out the stuff with the moons, you don't need to come and visit me in the middle of the night. Next full moon is almost upon us, are you feeling prepared? Eh, yeah, sure.
Alright.
Good, I'm counting on you. According to the cycle, it should appear on July 7th at midnight, that's six days from now. The number of incidents have also started to be increasing as we got closer to the full moon, so stay alert. Class ended for today. Oh my god. No. Don't make me do it. Oh my god, I have to do it. Gonna puke. Ah, boy. Why can't we block him? That's a good question. Yes, it would be, please. Do it, do it, quit. Do it, quit, you're not cut out to be an artist, leave. Yes, conveniently, I did.
So you did hear everything then?
Yeah.
He said I need to study more and concentrate on my future. When I told him I was a finalist in the contest... I thought he'd be proud, but all he said was that I was wasting my time.
That's messed up.
He said it's my responsibility to take over the hospital because I'm his only son. My dad doesn't care about me. He only cares about his stupid hospital.
Of course.
And it's not just him either. Just because my dad's a doctor, everyone expects me to be one too!
Ah.
I have my own dreams too, you know? I can't stand it anymore!
Dude, just gonna take it? Come on, I like... I like it, some uh... Some testicular fortitude from Kaseke over here. I don't know if that's gonna work, but... Okay. Alright, you're starting to grow on me a little bit, but I still wanna strangle you. Okay, talk to your dad. Have fun. I guess. Yes, I am back. On the 7th. Very well. I probably should do... Focusing on the... Academics? Um, maybe another time, because I do, I think I'm gonna focus on the uh... Academics, because we do have that test coming up. I figure it's probably smarter to do that. Oh, you know what? We could also buy some uh... Some stuff here. Mindful Bootcamp. That's it, huh? Damn. Thought there was more for us to buy, but I guess not. Alright. Still not up to four, I wanna get that up to four, at least before the end of the week. Class is ended for today. Eat like a... Oh my gosh, why? No one wants to like me? Can't go closer, okay. Dude, this isn't good, I... I feel like we can go closer to thanks to that, and if we might go closer, yes. Let's spend some time with it, thank you. Go somewhere we can talk in private. Are you in trouble?
Yeah, I... Dude, it's bad. I don't know what to do.
Took out money from somebody? Uh... That's nice, so they discover somebody is doing something to the student and they say, "Don't say..." "Gonna alert the police", they say, "Oh, we'll just send you to a different school." Smart. Yeah, she's under threat of criminal prosecution. Opened up to me about his troubles, I feel like a relationship is stronger, uh, Tomochika, you shouldn't kinda just give up on the... Teacher, maybe? Oh, we've almost maxed out his social link, damn. Okay. So sorry to hear that your life got saved from a dark future, that's so sad, bro. So sorry to hear that the school prevented you from being molested. So sorry. We eating a lot of fish. Oh yeah! Brain power! Still not enough. Soon, very soon. Alright. I can hear people talking. Hey, get this, the other night, my boyfriend casually tried to take me to Shuukawa Boulevard on a date. What? No way, that Shuukawa Boulevard? Ew, he totally had an ulterior motive. We just started dating, but I'm already getting creeped out, his head's always in the gutter. Maybe I should dump him. I don't wanna end up like one of those couples from the rumors, you know, the ones who... The ones that found unconscious somewhere? Hmm... The first bell has rung. As you all know, there are many theories about the author Murasaki Shikibu. That the Tale of Genji was authored by someone else, that Murasaki Shikibu was a shared pen name. Some have seen it as that Murasaki Shikibu was an alien from outer space, a truly intriguing figure. You've probably seen her in portraits, it's printed on the 2,000 yen bill. Well, since we're on the topic of Murasaki Shikibu, there's a question regarding the Tale of Genji. Mr. Okera is annoying! He's annoying. I don't know. I'd say romance. The world in the sense of the world of relationship and romance, wow, that's exciting. Very exciting stuff, wow. Um... Charlie Dolo? This is it. It's concerning. Some dramatic stuff here. What? How the fuck are you gonna do that? You're a student! No! Um... Fake. Bro... I knew it! It's faked. Maybe, I don't know, maybe not. Maybe not. Let me handle this. Yeah, I'm gonna beat up the woman. And the husband. Well, actually, she did, because you're a... A minor, and she's not, but... Whatever. Tomochika is trying to tough out the pain, feel like a relationship is stronger. It's kinda dark. I was tempted to say that, but... I decided not to. Let's go home, Kenji. On Friday, we have a couple more days. Wanna cook together again? Sure, let's cook together again. Ooh, tender breasts, my favorite! I should take notes on this, because I can't cook. We'll have to see.
So, we have to wash our hands first, and then... You're in charge of the rice and veggies.
Yes, sir. Ma'am, whatever.
So tender and juicy, way better than last time. See, this is what I'm capable of. I knew I could do it if I tried.
That's the kinda shit my aunt says when she makes food that doesn't taste like anything. Oh, it's so juicy! Put no seasoning on it! That's true. Well, we have a couple more days left before we have to really uh... Be concerned. You know it's gonna be a full moon soon, doesn't it make you nervous? It does, actually. Not sure what we're gonna fight. Right? I'm glad I'm not the only one, but still, I guess we have to do this no matter what. Class is ended for today. It's Yoshimi. I won't go any closer, not right now, let me see. How about you? Won't go any closer, so let's... Ah, boy, go away. Okay, so, he had... A good friend, Bibi. Bibi. Had mentioned something about wanting to, so where are you, Bibi? Hmm, Bibi.
Hello. Hello. She's trying to learn how to cook. Oh, Doug Woodsana, you on your way home? Uh, would you like some company? Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. Oh, but before that, do you mind if we stop by the library first? I really do enjoy talking with you.
I feel my bond with you hero grows stronger as we spend time together. Very exciting. What a beautiful voice. Yes, Tuesday of next week, love it, I know. Uh, what are you doing, another DVD? Uh, I don't care what type. Not right now, my friend. How about you, what are you doing? Um, we probably don't need to do that, because I did that already. We're gonna go real quick, little wakakatsu. Yes. I'm gonna go see what that is. Hmm... Hmm... Hmm, okay. Did someone go missing again? No. There's a lot of apathy victims hanging around, that's concerning. Very concerning. Anyways... Second floor. Wakakatsu. Potted y platter. Alright, two, we got two more, let's see what it does. Still not enough for four academics, damn. You know what's more concerning? You haven't started the Muramatsu, I don't even know who that is. I don't know who Mutatsu is. I have to probably find out who that is. I've got a few messages. Guess who's bored? Oh, boy.
Mutatsu.
Oh, we saw a movie, isn't it nice?
I'm so sorry for making you leave the movie partway through, though.
How'd you make me do...
I just, I couldn't focus on the movie because I kept worrying that... I was afraid I might see that guy from before who tried to um...
Don't let it bother you.
Yeah, I'll try, I mean, it's not like I was here that we ran into him before anyway. I'm sorry, I was so distracted today, it was rude of me, wasn't it? Alright, my mom asked me to buy some things for her on the way back. I should take care of that before it gets too dark, thanks for today.
Such a romantic woman. Wow, spending all my money on seafood. Still not enough. Got a real deficit of brain power, although anyone who watches my streams knows that's the case. Knows that's the case, yes. Okay, so we're on the 6th. What's up? Tomorrow's the big day, that's right. I've got butterflies in my stomach, you know, like right before a big match? Now I know how Sannata feels before he goes into the ring. Jeez. Class is ended for today. Well... Student council meeting today, no need to respond, just come to the student council room, that is all. Why don't you want my social link? I'm gonna go see if Bebe wants to talk. If Bebe doesn't wanna talk, then I will, uh... I will... Oh, Bebe, where are you, Bebe? Oh, it's not open, that's why. Mm, Bebe! Okay. Spend some time there. Next time, I'm gonna have to figure out who the heck Mutatsu is, Utatatsu or whatever the heck we're dealing with here. Get that social link started. Sup, dude, tomorrow's the day. If you lose, it gets over with the lost, right? I gotta win this no matter what. Down for any Tartarus later? Wanna pick up some muscle? Tomorrow, I think if you stand by in the dorm just in case, so if there are preparations you need to make, please take care of them today. Yes, ma'am. Alright, well... Nothing more for me to do right now, so... Call it here.